Good evening. I'm always here this morning.
Good evening. If y'all can hear me, we're gonna start meeting in about five minutes. If you want to speak, make sure you fill out the yellow citizens to be heard sheet over there. And we'll start in five minutes, six o'clock.
Yes, ma'am. We're good. How was the food?
You know, I ate that she likes so much, but I'm gonna eat after. But they said it was good, so I didn't have that time.
You're good. Go ahead, just in case if I forget tonight. You're fine, thank you.
I got everyone's size.
We gave you your own hand sanitizer, right?
Good evening. Good evening. This is quite a crowd tonight. Have everyone's attention, please. It is 6:03 on October 21st, 2021, and this is a duly filed and posted regular meeting of the Alamo Heights Board of Trustees. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to welcome anyone listening on our live streaming broadcast. If anyone would like a recording of this meeting, we will also be posting a link on the district website within 24 hours after the end of this meeting. In addition, we also post the materials being presented within 24 hours. So you can review a copy of those as well online. These can be found under the school board icon on our AHISD.net website. If any one in the audience would like to address the board tonight, we welcome your input during our Citizens to be Heard item on the agenda. We ask that you have filled out the yellow sheet. I hope everyone has done it by now. By the door, read the instructions and indicate the agenda item if there is one that you want to discuss. We have received seven requests, and they're all general, but if anyone else wants to do it, if you quickly fill one out, when we get to that, we will hear you. With that, I'll turn it over to Frank Alfaro for recognitions.
Good evening. I am Frank Alfaro, Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services, and it is my privilege and honor to be able to run through some delegations and recognitions tonight. I do want to ask everyone that if you come only to view the recognitions, that's great, but I will ask you to save throughout the entire list of recognitions, and you'll all the way through our student council update, which will be done by Lily today, I think right Lily greeted you in the bathroom, so that's her. So don't leave until she's done. Now, the other thing is, I will actually, I will say it to you when it's time to leave. So I'll say this again. Thanks for being here, and this is a good time to leave. So I really appreciate the cooperation of that. We have so many people to recognize, it's only fitting that we recognize them all, to begin with. Now, I wanna call someone up here and then explain why we are recognizing them. So our spotlight on excellence this month shines on Alamo Heights High School teacher of the special education program, Bella Martinez-Camon Down. I'm sure lots of people are taking pictures. And I could explain, first of all, what our spotlight on excellence is. Now, we have a tradition of excellence, and we know that what you see in the front is only possible by all the things that happen behind the scenes. And so we have this monthly award called Spotlight on Excellence, in which we like to shine a spotlight on people behind the scenes who don't often get recognition, but are a sure part of our tradition of excellence. Now Bella is a teacher in the special education program at the high school, and this is a special award because you get nominated by your peers. And so I won't say who nominated you yet. You might know already, but one of the things that Bella stands out as, she's early in her career as a teacher, but is already making an impact on both the school as well as her department. Now, you may have noticed, this has been a challenging couple of years. And so leading us through the COVID years, as well as new staff that Bella has quickly become a mentor to, and she does it all with grace, dignity, and a growth mindset. And so that's great anyway, but when you combine it with all the challenges that we've had through the pandemic, plus her service to students with some pretty severe disabilities, and she works through all of that, that's why we were shining Spotlight on Excellence on you, Bella, today. Now, I want to give you a chance to say anything you'd like. I know you have some family in the audience as well, and so let's recognize them, but also tell us whatever you'd like to say.
It takes a team to make it happen. So thank you so much for Austin, being awesome leader, and thanks for my parents for coming.
Welcome.
Next, I'd like to call, actually, yeah, I'd like to call Tristan Salinas from the Junior School Come On Down. We're gonna queue up a video that I think essentially explains why we're recognizing it, and hopefully I won't have to say much more after that. Queue it up and hit it.
It's time. And for today's Excel Award winner, who comes from Alamo Heights ISD, he's only been teaching for three years, and at the young age of 25, he is way ahead of his game. His impact is felt inside and outside his classroom. Tristan Salinas is a world traveler, but there's one place he enjoys most. And it's not that far away from home.
I think it is one of the best places in the world.
Being on the football field among his students, coaching at Alamo Heights Junior School, and forming those special bonds in his English classroom.
I just really need to care about them, not only in the classroom, but outside of it as well. I'm more made of them, and I think they are of me for sure. I think they push me to wanna coach and teach.
Coach Salinas is young, but already way ahead of his game. You have not been with us in Alamo Heights for all that many years, but you have quickly left your mark, and to mark his accomplishments, I'd like to present you with a Kent five and a talent board with a big check from the human.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. Hopefully, okay, we have a greasement, and I'm saying our really, really good.
And always go the extra mile for these kids.
They help me with every class, and they just like tickle my stress off my ears. And they heal my mind from how I've been teaching.
Teaching them to set no limits and reach for goals they once saw us on a table.
And this guy's learning from what they can accomplish, and I think that's not by myself, but it's all that I'm meant to know, that they're always there when I say that.
Yay, wow, Bella, what would you like to add to that, or is anybody who's with you, the mic is yours for a moment?
I just wanted to say, it's an honor. So many great teachers in the district who've chosen for the award, it's awesome. But like I told my kids, it's a kids' award, their grade, they're awesome, they make it every single day, and so most of that is to them, not just me, so.
Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call the Kent five and UPS Store star student award winner, Dylan Corso from the high school, Come On Down. So we get to watch another cool video, and let's see if that does a good job explaining why we're recognizing Dylan tonight. Queue it up and hit it.
Start your food time now, clean my mat next. An Alamo Heights junior is a mover and shaker. Here's Vanessa Coy with our Kent five All-Star student.
Who is that young man that's always walking around campus with a purpose? He's always on a mission.
If you haven't met me yet, I'm Dylan.
Dylan Corso is often called the mayor of Alamo Heights High School. He is so dedicated to what he wants to do. And that unofficial title might be because he's the face known around campus. He does so much for our school. He tries to get people included and involved, just goes above and beyond all the time. Or it could be his role as president of student council, or his vibrant dedication to the Mule Tube production team.
I love video because, you know, it's not only a way I can express myself, but it's a way I can, you know, reach the rest of the school.
And for those who know Dylan, he shines a positive light on everything. He doesn't just follow his passion.
I try to wake up every morning and make sure every student here feels loved and included.
He takes it with him every day.
My goal is always 100% student engagement, and making sure every student feels like they have a home, and that they belong, in equitable space, where everyone is treated equally and on the same plane.
And that's why Dylan Corso is a Kent five All-Star student.
The UPS Store locations in South Texas along with Kent five likes to recognize students that have achievements and leadership.
David Rogoff with Alamo Heights UPS Store presented Dylan with the All-Star Award.
I put in so much effort and intentionality to everything I do. I hope my lasting impact on the high school is one of joy and of grace.
And that's for a Kent five, I look this news.
And so a couple of things that were not mentioned in that cool video were that Dylan is also a member of the team that does the video board at the ballgames now at the stadium. And so that's super cool, he's behind that. And he was also in a team who created a former speaker of the house, Joe Strauss, got an award from the Texas School Public Relations Association, and Dylan was instrumental in creating that video for former Speaker Strauss. And so Dylan, congratulations, we're super proud of you. Anything else you wanna add?
I just wanna give a big shout out. You know, this isn't my award, I think it belongs to everyone who puts up with me all day. Mr. Dylan in the back and Ms. Carter are both so amazing, and they put up with me like 23 hours of the day, and I don't know how they do it. And my parents, I just could not be more grateful and be more lucky to be a part of such a supportive community. So thank you all. I love and appreciate each and every one of you.
I love you, Dylan. Our next recognition, for our next recognition, I'm gonna have David Stevens to walk up these folks up here. This is a National Merit of Excellence, National Wind Band Honors Project Award, who goes to the Alamo Heights High School Wind Ensemble. Let's give them a round of applause. And so tell me where this group ends? Because I think we're mixing in some of the National Merit folks. So Tori, thank you. Alright, so let's have the national merit stand back. And so, Mr. Stevens, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk down and get names, and go all the way to the end and end with you. And so tell us, are you ensemble? Oh, I'm here, wow. And work ensemble is the right word. Tell us your name, what grade you're in, and I'm gonna go up, actually, you can pass this, and I'll just catch it at the end.
I'm just like, you know, I'm a senior. And we're also, all these guys.
I'm Eric Guzman, I'm also a senior.
I'm Logan Yedogas, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Maz Parrish, I'm a senior.
I'm Abby Colley, I'm a senior.
I'm Danielle Land, I'm also a senior.
I'm Paul Maraski, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Suat Rujir, so I'm also a senior.
I'm Abby Golden, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Anna Seepro, I'm a senior.
I'm Mark Smith, I'm a junior.
I'm Yoserna, I'm a senior.
I'm Everett Carpenter, I'm a junior.
I wouldn't say a senior.
I'm Louis Ricardo, I'm a junior.
I'm Michael Dahl, I'm a junior.
I'm Gary Willyvine, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Christopher Ball, I'm a junior.
I'm Felipe Marshan, I'm a senior.
I'm Marcos Ramirez, I'm a junior.
I'm Robert Prabieska, and I'm a senior.
I'm Gabriel Hu, I'm a senior.
I'm Evan Beck, and I'm a junior.
My name is Jackson Hetchcock, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Sebastian Vergenes, and I'm a senior.
I'm Jason Lopez, and I was a senior last year.
I'm Joe White, and I'm a junior.
My name is Emma Her, and I'm a senior.
And I'm David Stevenson, I'm more than a senior.
This is a really prestigious award, so I'm gonna turn it over to David to explain what's involved, so you can understand just how prestigious this is.
So this is called the Wind Ensemble, and it's really our varsity or our top band. 25 years ago, it was a symphonic band, and then we made it smaller, but this is about the size of the Wind Ensemble. And what this is, we recorded our UIL performance from last spring, so we performed in April and recorded that, and we submitted two of the pieces from that to the Foundation for Music Education in this Merit of Excellence. And what they do with this is they send the recordings to, they're adjudicated or judged by college band directors, and those college band directors will give us comments, they have taped comments that we did, and I will tell you, the coolest thing is listening to those and really hearing nothing wrong. They were just very, very positive and complimentary of this group. And then they rank them, and these are tapes, or not tapes, they're recordings now, from all over the nation, and they rank them. In the top 25% are national awards or national winners, and that's the group that we were placed in. We've entered this before and not been able to get into that echelon yet, but this year we were able to. So very cool, the level of work that these guys put in, and you'll see, these guys are current members of the Wind Ensemble, and most of them were in the Wind Ensemble last year. We also have JJ, who was here, he was one of last year's, he was on the recording, so we have some alumni who are able to come here. And the work that these guys put in individually, as well as the ensemble, playing together, just the work that they do together was at a really high level, and still is as we're moving forward. I also want to, you know, make sure I recognize Ms. Childress and Mr. Moreno, who are in the back here also. As well as our junior school band directors, who started these guys and got that, Mr. McCrue, Mr. Bowman, and Miss Mendela. Just so lucky to have great colleagues to work with.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you, David, and the work you all do, and so one last round of applause, and you guys can figure out what's happening. Well orchestrated. Patty, is School Views accepted in the halls already?
Sue.
Okay, so that's great. I'm gonna make a reference to it, so I don't know. Alright, as you can see, our next recognition is likewise a big group, I will not call it an ensemble. And we would like to recognize now, Alamo Heights High School students that are recognized for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Let me, we'll clap in a minute, but I need to explain this. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation was created to foster a wider, deeper respect for learning in general, and in particular for exceptionally talented students in high school. It was, its intent is to shine a spotlight on brilliant students and encourage the pursuit of academic excellence. And lastly, it's designed to stimulate increased support for scholarships from a variety of corporations and organizations around the world. And so with those three purposes, every year, about 1.6 million juniors take the PSAT, and several other sophomores also take the PSAT, as we know. And about the top 3% of the scoring students, 3% in the world, are considered for this National Merit Scholarship Competition. Now, there's a variety of different levels that you can get, and that's why I asked about School Views. When you get the School Views, you see them all listed out. As I was visiting with the youngsters in the back, we decided not to kind of try to list all the different categories they're in, because quite frankly, some of us forgot what categories we're recognizing, we get so many awards. So you get, commended students are roughly, of the top 3% of the scores, roughly 2/3 of that 3% are commended students. And then about 1/3 of the top 3% are semifinalists, and then we also have these categories for the top 2% of folks that are Hispanic, that are African-American, and indigenous backgrounds are also recognized. That's a really, really big deal. And so let's clap once while I walk all the way over there. I'm gonna ask them to say their names and what grade they're in now, just knowing that they would have picked the PSAT a year ago, so you don't get a different grade.
I'm Gabriel Hu, and I'm a senior.
I'm Sophie Biffle, I'm a junior.
I'm Ockie Stilwell, I'm a junior.
I'm Sarah Hernandez, and I'm a junior.
I'm Brandon White, and I'm a junior.
I'm Ruth Ciosario, and I'm a junior.
I'm Carson DeLeon, and I am a junior.
I'm Keony Rose, and I'm a senior.
I'm Leila Richa, I'm a senior.
I'm James Bird, and I'm a senior.
I'm Jacob Williams, and I'm a senior.
I'm Rodrigo Rosas, and I'm a senior.
I'm Colin Kentu, and I'm a senior.
I'm Claudia Mendibal Diaz, and I'm a senior.
I'm Madeline Leonard, and I'm a senior.
J.B. Mayes, grade 12.
I'm Gabrielle Walrath, and I'm a senior.
I'm Emma Thompson, I'm a senior.
I'm Bo Perez, and I'm a senior.
I'm Andrew Bolzbach, and I'm a senior.
I'm Gavin Wilshard, and I'm a senior.
I'm Derek Harrison, and I'm a senior.
I'm Liam Burman, I'm a senior.
I'm just like, yeah, I'm a senior.
I'm Eric Guzman, senior.
I'm Logan Yedogas, a senior.
Wow, let's give this group of folks a round of applause. Now, I'd like to ask Lily, come on down. You guys can just hang out where you are, because we're almost done with recognitions. I appreciate that group for hanging back. What a great, respectful group. Our last delegation and recognition is to find out what the Alamo Heights High School Student Council has come up to. Lily?
Hi, I'm Lily, I'm representing the student council for today. First, I want to talk about some things that we have already done, and then I'll talk about some things that we're looking forward to. So first things first, Hattie Heights is a great success in homecoming court and hallway decorating. Students were represented both in nominations and as well as doing a great job bringing school spirit into our hallways. Bonfire is a huge success, thanks to maintenance and athletics for making it possible. Homecoming Dance was incredible, and I, in fact, some of the students, Father brought a mini... of Miami to those. The fifth thing is, Student Council Leadership Team Build Retreat next week. Coming up is the Thanksgiving Lunch for Custodians, Student Council Volunteers for Woodridge Carnival, meeting in November 1st for our Alamo Heights Battle of the Flowers float. And lastly, student, or supporting District 8 campus character education. And that is it. Thank you.
I want to give a shout out to the sponsor, Roger Dillon back there, thanks for all you do for the student council. Thank you very much. So, that ends the recognition portion of the meeting. I do want to remind everyone that we have business to attend to, so you're welcome to stay, but if you needed to get on to other things, this is a great time to leave, so thank you very much. We'll get started with business section as soon as everybody comes through down. Thank you, school board. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job, guys.
Okay, we're next going to move to Section 3, Citizens to Be Heard. We have received seven requests to speak on or give public comments about an item that is not on the agenda. In order to facilitate an orderly meeting and respect all participants' time, and in the interest of conducting an efficient meeting, any group of three or more persons, which actually doesn't apply to that, could appoint one person to speak. Here are the rules, and we do ask that you follow these, it's out of respect for each of you who is speaking. You have three minutes to speak. Alicia will hold up a card when there is one minute left, when you get the yellow card, one minute left, and she'll get the blue card when time is up. We do ask that when your time is up, that you stop speaking, so that we can move on to the next speaker. In making your presentation, it is very important that you do not refer to individual students or personnel by name or position, especially in this public setting, it is best to be careful with comments about specific people. In addition, by state law, I want you to understand, the board is not allowed to respond to your comments. We welcome and appreciate your comments, and the fact that we are sitting here silently, don't take that or misinterpret it as we don't care. We welcome your comments. By state law, we are not allowed to respond in any way. We will begin with Kate Guesado, and Jim Burks will be the next one up.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to start with a quote that was on the first class we walked into back to school night at the junior school. "Life is mostly froth and bubble, two things stand like stone. Kindness is another struggle, courage in your own." That teacher's message was that it is our job to be kind for our children, if they find the courage to become who they are. He was speaking to parents that night, but the message is clear, for not just parents, but all adults interacting with our children. In part, so that other children can see how to do the same, but largely so that they have a safe space to find their own courage. Something has happened over the past couple of years, and the group of children has been politicized. They did not ask for this, nor did their parents. They're simply trying to do what that teacher alluded to on back to school night, and figure out who they are and where they sit. That they may dress differently, maybe wear their hair differently, have pressure on someone your own child wouldn't, none of that's relevant. They're children figuring out who they are, and that's their job. I realize that school boards and administrators have to listen to and try to please many conflicting voices, but at your core, your job is to create a safe space for children to learn. You'll hear parents railing against pronouns and pride flags because those things scare them. As a result, their children come to school and repeat those comments and more to my child and friends. And so, now there's a safe space to learn and become a battleground for identity. It feels relevant now to mention that the suicide rate among LGBTQIA youth is 1.5 to 3 times higher than that of heterosexual cis* students. This should make us all stop, it makes me feel sick to my stomach. While state legislators play politics with children, I'm asking that the school district take a moment and recognize their job. From your mission, you say that you will educate and empower every student to excel academically and as a confident, compassionate citizen with impeccable character. So I'm here to ask you all to do something relatively simple, allow your immediate teachers to support the students on their campuses. Whether it's putting up pride flags to signal a safe space, or asking students what their pronouns are, these are minor things that have an enormous impact on the children that need them. And for the children that don't, perhaps they'll learn some of the core values of the district, especially things like humility, courage, and empathy, most important of all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guesado. Jim Burks, and then April Duval will be next.
Good evening, I'm Jim Burks. I was here last month to protest the presence of the LGBT flag in some of the high school classrooms. I'm here again to complain again, as I understand, nothing has changed. I've also heard that my complaint has no standing because I have no child in the district classroom. Essentially, my opinion is a vote. I don't know if you've taken the opportunity to check your tax roll demographics lately, but I think you might be surprised to learn that the majority of the people paying the bills for the school district have no kids in a classroom at the current time. So I think the administration's first question to someone with a concern should not be, "Do you have kids in our school?", it should be, "How can I help you?" As for me, I intend to spend a little part of each of my day, or every day, talking to neighbors in where I live, urging them to become informed, to get involved, to ask their kids what happened in school today, ask their grandkids, ask the neighbors' kids, and just to find out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burks. April Duval, and then Ella Duval will be next.
Good evening. I'm a parent of three children in the Alamo Heights School District, and I'm also a professional in the neighborhood school district. I work at another middle school, where we have a lot of pride flags. I'm speaking in support of the teachers at the junior school specifically, who put up progress pride flags and safe space stickers in support of marginalized students. The progress pride flag is not political, but it lets students who are dealing with races or homophobic bullying know that they have a safe staff member to speak to. Alamo Heights has an ongoing bullying issue targeting LGBTQ students. Many students report racist comments, there's a lot of Instagrams about it. Thank you to all the staff who have these flags up, who know normalized asking about pronouns. And I hope the board will address adding comprehensive anti-bullying training for staff, as well as bystander training for students. Those are proven in many other schools to reduce bullying. Many parents and students have reported bullying that staff had difficulty responding to, I am one of those parents. Training for staff and students is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Ella Duval, and then Sarah Jones will be next.
Hi, my name is Ella, and I'm a student at the junior school. And I'm speaking in support of all the teachers who showed they cared enough to put up the pride flags in their classrooms. As a student, I have been very disappointed in the amount of bullying, and seeing pride flags is a really positive thing, and it shows really encouraging messages, and it shows that you care. It shows that kids can be, have a safe place and have people supporting them. Taking down pride flags, which are political flags, is basically saying that you don't think LGBTQ kids and people don't deserve to have a safe place, and to feel safe being themselves. And I hear the core values every day, I go that I'm a student at Alamo Heights, and I think that's contradictory. Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. Sarah Jones, and then Lisa Fox will be next.
Good evening. I'm with Alamo Heights Community Alliance, and we just wanted to say tonight that we support the voter approved tax rate election. We also, with the flu season ramping up, we are committed to our collaboration with the district to get as much units in classrooms as we can most. We also support our teachers who provide safe spaces and remain for finalized training and education on anti-bullying practices. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Lisa.
I apologize, please excuse me, my 11-year-old has a birthday party, her 12-year-old has a dog tonight, so.
Lisa Fox, and then Kara Vandicap will be last.
I want to say first, I have a mystery coming with you guys since last October. And I don't want that mystery to shadow what I'm about to say and bring to the board. Since September 10th, I have been grappling with it and looking into what happened to my son, and how it went on over for eight minutes. With two adults within 10 feet of the incident. Since then, I have been hearing from other parents about how their child had been bullied at the school and did nothing to address it, and how some students don't feel like reporting bullying incidents to administration because they feel like they don't care or will do anything to address it, and also fear retaliation. In my son's incident, the whole grade level witnessed what this group of boys did to him. I have been, since this incident has happened, I've been speaking with Ms. Molek for some guidance, since her son had committed suicide from bullying at Alamo Heights. She informed me of a bill that just passed requiring all schools to have an anti-bullying committee for each campus. I asked the board for transparency and communication with all parents in the district when you start forming these committees, that I hope to be a part of. There's a lot of interest in volunteers on this subject. Whenever this incident happened to my son, within three days, I had created an anti-bullying club at the junior school, and I had over 22 students wanting to sign up within three days. These children are suffering, and they're being silenced at this district. According to CDC, bullying reports in middle school are about 28%, in high school is at 16%, with an average of 12% combined. Alamo Heights has 2,775 between middle school and high school, so at 12%, that's 333 students. Our numbers say that Alamo Heights has 0.09% cases of reporting of bullying. In 2018, there was 25 reports and only four were confirmed. In 2019, there was 17 reports and only four were confirmed as bullying incidents. In 2020, the numbers are so far are 10 reports and six were confirmed. The administration did not acknowledge this incident and bullying with my son until we filed an FNG Level 1 complaint. This brings me to my concern about the procedures and practices for recording bullying. When this happened, of course, I was very upset for once, for a child in a video being followed by a mob of boys. I have shown the pictures, if everyone can see, it's kind of blurred, but there's a big group, and he's all by himself, he's surrounded by them. However, this was brought to light, it's a very important issue, that the process for recording bullying complaint is a long and hard process. This was not an easy task to accomplish, and is still ongoing. I just want to know what it takes to have a bullying complete file for the school, and I ask that the board address it next morning about the bullying policy in house.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
Kara Vandicap is our last speaker. You can take it off the stand if that's easier.
Yeah, that's better.
I'm also here on behalf of the Alamo Heights Community Alliance. The Alliance supports the proposed tax rate in tax rate selection. As many of you know, the CPA released guidance on Article 7 regarding the use of Tupper Air purifiers in the classroom. If you weren't aware of that, it's on their website, and they strongly encourage it. So, again, we look forward to working with you all in collaborating with getting those into the classrooms where the air quality would justify it. And again, we thank for your service to our community.
Thank you very much. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard, part of our meeting. Thank you all for coming and sharing your views with us. We will now move to Section 4, Items for Presentation or Possible Action. And the first one is Career and Technical Education Update, and we've got Dr. Jimmy Walker and his Charlotte Doherty. Thank you.
Hello, did you hear? There we go. Can you turn on? So I'm really excited about this next topic. We've talked, had conversations with you all at the board about career and tech, as we've talked about new facilities, and as we've talked about college and career readiness, and as we've talked about new courses. But it's been at least four years since we've really been able to shine a spotlight on the career tech programs at Alamo Heights. And they're growing, and they're spectacular, and I am thrilled that tonight we get to just talk through an overview of some of the opportunities that we're able to offer, mostly at our high school, but also at our junior school as well. So, talking tonight is Mrs. Charlotte Doherty, she's our academic dean at the high school, and she'll be walking us through the program.
we've talked about new facilities and as we've talked about college and career, college and career readiness, and as we've talked about new courses. But it's been at least four years since we've really been able to shine a spotlight on the career tech programs here in Alamo Heights. And they're growing and they're spectacular and I'm thrilled that tonight we get to just talk through an overview and some of the opportunities that we're able to offer mostly at our high school, but also at our junior school as well. So talking tonight is Mrs. Charlotte Gilrock. She's our academic dean at the high school and she'll be walking us through the programs and I'm excited she's here.
She's excited and I'm super excited because there's so many amazing things are happening with our CTE program at the high school. As you can see, CTE stands for Career Technology Education for whatever reason, I can't seem to remember education at the end, but it is education at the end, which should be easy enough because it's an education program. So here's the broad and the kind of the technical definition of the career technology education definition. But basically what it is, it's a program that allows our students to do hands-on exploration of skills that will help them as they perfect themselves through college or if they choose to do something different through their post-education, leading the high school. But that last portion right here is another piece. In CTE at the high school, it's a chance for them to explore career options and personal passions through authentic and rigorous learning and being the main part of the hands-on. And you'll see a lot of that through the images that we share with you tonight. So CTE also prepares our students for entry level employment. And so there's some certified, certifications that they can receive at the end of the second level. And then there's also a coherent sequence that we have. We're working to get in a sequence of three or more. And some of our programs right now are at two, but we're working to increase that as So our goal this year, and we've had several other goals and you'll see those later on, but our goal this year is actually to work on the industry-based certifications and to increase those because we haven't had them at all. And right now, they are allowed to have them after the second year of the CTE course. So if part of that sequence, as they enter year two, then they can apply for the industry-based certifications. And we have teachers that are working towards those in particular content areas. This year, there's been a lot that's been going on. We rolled out of a pandemic. We're still in a pandemic. And so with the changes and everything, we kind of gave teachers the choice and comfort level. I'm really excited to have Anne Carter here and she's over, over here to my right. And she really helps drive the CTE program at Alamo Heights. And so, and when I look at some of the things that Anne does, Anne has multiple press, so what, four, five, six, I'm not sure, five. She has five press. So we gave her the choice, like what is one of those that she feels comfortable helping our students get an industry certification and to kind of see what that is. So we wanted them to have choices. We didn't want them to feel overwhelmed. We didn't know how the school year was going to start and what it would entail, but we're excited to have several of those in place. So when you look back here, Texas offers 16 career clusters. And you'll notice there's a wide range of them, all the way from agriculture to marketing, human services. One of the things that we do is we take surveys from students. We look at what's interesting, what they find an interest in, and that's kind of how we start those pathways that you see on the right-hand side. Those are Alamo Heights offering pathways that we have. Some of it is also dependent on such as our location. As you know, we are landlocked. It is very hard for us to have wide open spaces to have ag farms. So therefore, we don't have agricultural program that makes it a little more difficult to have any farms or I'm not even sure what the city ordinance would be for having farms to have in Alamo Heights. So some of it's dependent on our location and then some of it's dependent on the teacher's certifications also and their interests as well. So our pathways are the design and multimedia, advanced manufacturing, machinery, education and training, which is by Teach Program, culinary, STEM and engineering. And you can see currently we have 863 Alamo Heights students enrolled in the CTE program, about 52% of our students. So one of the things that we really try and do as a district and as a campus is we want to, to really build a culture that promotes careers that are not just, we know that most of our, a good number of our students may not go on to college. And so we want to make sure that they understand they have pathways and they have options. So part of what we do is with our college and career fair is that we allow US military to come in. Their table at that is there during one of the days that we have our college chairs. And then we have other trade industries that come in as well to show students that they have other options if they feel that college is just not right for them. We also have what we, this is Texas Work Commission, which we use with our special education students. So we make sure that they understand what their options are as well and if they may not be moving on to a college, they have other things such as partnering with Region 20 that have some opportunities there. We have Project Access at Palo Alto, which allows our students to be able to get some credits that will help them in the work industry. We actually have a graduate that's there right now going through the Palo Alto Project Access. And then what we've also done is I know that you've heard a lot about our project-based learning that's going on on the campus. And so one of our teachers, Erica Barrero, has designed a unit where her students will begin to create a career and technical education fair, so separate from the college fair. And this will happen in the springtime. So that's their project as a class to create this to show, show students they have other options as well. One other opportunity we have for our students is that we collaborate with what's called the Alamo Academies. And we actually have two students, one in each one of these categories. And one is attending for at St. Phillips for Information Technology and Security Academy and the other one is Media Effectory Technology Academy. So they spend the first half of their day at St. Phillips and then the latter half is back here with our campus for the courses that they're taking here. So let's take a look at some of our pathways. This is the Design and Multimedia Arts. And so with these, obviously, students are going to be designing, implementing and creating some type of final product. And so within this, we have animation, graphic design, AV production and video game design. And as I heard you say earlier, we have either, we're working on two, some of these are at two and we're working and trying to have a pathway of four options for students as they progress. So after two, I mentioned that they can get that sort of certification afterwards. And so one of the things that Ms. Carter and her class will be working on is getting the certification for Adobe Photoshop. So that's what those students will be working. These are the other options for students and we will get there at some point, but we want to start here. What we're having our teachers do is pick what it is that they feel comfortable with, allowing them to do the certification also so that they know how to guide their students through the test when it comes time for them. And then here's some fabulous pictures of our students in action when they talk about the hands-on portion, which is definitely hands-on here. Here we have STEM and the Advanced Manufacturing and Machinery and Mechanics. And so under this, we have Computer Programming and Advanced Computer Programming. At this point in time, we're not going to have the certifications on one, there's not one for the robotics necessarily. We're looking to see what we could potentially put in place for that. But for the Advanced Computer, this is actually, Mr. Munoz has gotten himself AP Board certified. So this next year, he will be able to do the AP College Board Test with his students for that. So that's what he'll be working on versus the certification that'll get it. And then here you can take a look. We have some images of the drone competition that just happened not too long ago. It's the first time, I think, a year and a half that they were allowed to actually physically be somewhere to do the drone and complicate it in the right, it's very cool. And then the robotics portion of it. And it's just not, it's not just about putting a robot and having a robot program and go. And it's really about real-world application, putting scenarios together that might be like you have a task that you have to create some type of robot that's going to go in and save a country or save something or we even talked about how do you have a robot come in and help with North New Braunfels and all the flooding that happens. Like those are challenges that we can think about what could a robot possibly do. So here, and we're super excited about education and training instruments that we have here. So you'll see there's two off to the right-hand side. This is your sneak peek, what will be offered, what we'll be asking for for post-courses in November. And one will be Principles of Education and Training and then the one will be the Practica. So right now, we have Child Development and Instructional Practices, which is our Teach Program. So we have our students head over to Howard and they all go over to Howard and are loving every minute of being there to support them. There's some really wonderful pictures of them leading smaller construction, reading groups and just the love right here that they have for this student. And some of those certifications you can see there, I'll talk a little bit about that. Had to throw this in. Got to have some excitement. Dr. Walker. I never spoke that way.
That's all right.
So Dr. Walker asked Jackie Moore, and Jackie Moore is the teacher that is over the Teach Program, for us to look into a particular grant. So we gathered our information in the beautiful format and function that Dr. Walker does. She wrapped it up with a nice bow, finished writing it, sent it off and we were awarded a $20,000 grant. So now, not to be overshadowed by the fireworks, this is what the $28,000 grant provides for us. So it provides a curriculum and ongoing professional development for the teacher of record. It funds membership fees to the Texas Association of Future Teachers and Educators Rising, I2, who is a Teacher of America, part of that organization when I was in school, and provides a stipend for the teacher or teachers of record. And then potentially it's leading to, and actually Jackie has already submitted all our information for treat, turning it into a dual-credit course. Next, we have culinary and I know that you all have partaken in some of the festive celebrations and things that they have created. And you can see the pathway that we have here. The students have actually just received their Service Safe Manager certification. So they are now doing, have completed that and are with that full portion. So here you can see what I love is that they bring in a lot of people outside. On the left-hand side is actually a former student who's at the Culinary Institute right now. And so she came back to talk to students. You have Mr. Dillard, who was here earlier. He's brought in some physics to go along with it to show how cooking and physics go together. And then just a student in the middle that is working. They actually have Chef Stahl's brother is coming and he was a chef at the White House and he'll be talking to students as well. So up next, we have, I think you all are very familiar with the Rocketry Program. And so here you can see the sequence that happens with this. So again, remember, at the second level, any of our students can get a certification for AutoCAD and Mr. Lang is going to be working on that in the spring. So he does have Level 4 students, but he, they can also drive through the AutoCAD certification as well. So it doesn't just have to be students that are at Level 2, it could be 3 or 4. And then fashion design, we have Level 1 and Level 2. This is a course that you all approved, probably about two years ago, three years I guess. And it is ramping up like no above this business. It is so neat to watch this happen. On the left-hand side, she collaborated with Cal, the program that goes over to the, to the elementary schools and mentors our young students. And what those students did is they created, they read a book and then they had to a character but they also created a little monster on paper. Those monsters were brought back to the fashion design class and the fashion design class actually made the monsters and then sent them back over to the schools with the kids. So here you see them with their little monsters.
Right.
And at this time, there's no certification that is offered for fashion design. And I know you're all too familiar with incubator as well, having incubator and accelerator and the amazing things that they are doing with their fighter filament grid that has done such an amazing job and progressed quite a bit. And we're looking at to see what types of certifications are that don't necessarily fit like the business portion of it, but everything is like Microsoft that they can get. There's more like program types of certifications that students can proceed through the incubator business, business incubator experience there. So where are we now? All our culinary students have received the Service Safe Food Handler Certification, which is amazing. Rocketry students again are going to use the AutoCAD Certified User Exam this spring. We're working the cert port to get a quote, I say we, Anne Carter is working to get a quote for us about the DODI certified. It says, we're trying to figure out a company that will do it all together so that we're not piecing in like different certifications. And then students will take the exam this spring. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, that our computer programming is working towards the College Board AP exam that they will be able to take in '22 and '23. So we're happy beginning with our goals. We talked about this year, the goal is to get students certified. But if you take a look up here, we've had an increase in numbers. So 2017, '18, we have 585 CTE students and now we have 863. That's a 48% increase, which is pretty amazing. And when you think about all the programs that we have and the opportunities that we provide for students and it's probably future. And so then we also like to take a look at the balance between that because we often think that this is kind of a male-dominated CTE program. And so you can see here from 17, '18, 76 males and then this year, 58% are the male population. So we're increasing in the number of females that we have that are part of the CTE program. And I'm going to hand over the funding considerations to Dr. Walker. I'm just going to quickly amplify the importance of these industry-based certifications because when kids walk in with an industry certification, it gives them a competitive edge if they're applying to colleges, if they're applying for jobs, and it gives them the confidence that they genuinely do have some talents and skills in that area. So the funding, it changed a little bit last year. And so along what Charlotte is saying, they, Texas wants kids that aren't just taking one class, but are taking multiple. If you take one year of robotics, you're coming away with an enjoyable experience, you learned some skills, but if you take three, you have some marketable skills that you can transfer into a next step. So CTEA aligned their funding to that premise. So under the weighting for each class, y'all, these are expensive courses. When you think about the supplies and materials needed to build a rocket, these are expensive courses. So there is weighted funding at 1.1 for any course that is not aligned within a pathway. We don't have any of these. All of our courses are aligned to a pathway. Even small animal management is not considered singleton, even though we don't have a second step to it. It still is at that next level, 1.28 in state of Texas funding. So all of our courses are at 1.28 and as Charlotte talks about building out that third year and that fourth year course, as kids stay in for Level 3 to 3 and 4, the funding increases to a weighted funding of 1.47. In addition to that, we also are eligible for outcome bonus funding and industry certifications are a component of that. Another nice support for CTE programs from CTEA is that CTEA will pay for one certification test per student over their tenure in high school, which absolutely helps. Finally, and I want you to sit in this for a minute, all of our weighted funding goes for salaries. Perkins is what we use for resources and materials to fund everything that Charlotte just talked about. Federal funds, we have $36,000 a year, full stop. So it's really because of our supportive community and a judicious use of resources by our teachers that we are able to sustain the programs that we have. And I'll keep talking while Charlotte finishes drinking her water. And there you go. So I really appreciate the time to be able to talk about all the programs that are here because we're extremely grateful that these are opportunities that you all provide that the community provides for our students to be able to have those real-world experiences, to be able to take something beyond just a classroom and to be able to implement it or use it in the next choice of what they're going to do past graduation. And so I'm going to go back to, oh, I have to do this, just a second. Right here. So that $20,000, and I want to talk about the Teach Program just a tad bit more because when you think about who was here tonight or who is still here tonight, Anne Carter, Roger Dillard, Bella Martinez, Austin Amaro, we're all graduates from Alamo Heights and have come back and they're teaching here in the district. And so that's pretty amazing for us to be able to say they were here, they're back for us now. And what better place for our students to learn about good teaching than in Alamo Heights? Thank you. Questions?
That makes me emotional.
We'll buy some time while you talk.
All right, thanks.
Any question? David?
Okay, I think so much of this stuff is great. I mean, my, my son is a junior school principal, whatever you define, like C sharp program language, which I didn't learn until something like college. So like I, I love this kind of stuff. But I do want to make sure, and I know the answer, but I'd like for you to communicate it, that, you know, the pursuit of these CTE courses does not take away from the core curriculum, from the rigorous, you know, capitalist philosophy that they're involved in. Just a random side of it.
Yeah, absolutely. I would say if anything, they're finding real-world applications for countless by building a rocket. a rocket. They're finding real-world applications for English by fire and writing all of the marketing programs and presenting to the community for a business plan. So I think it's taking those skills that are learned in the classroom and finding an authentic, meaningful way to apply them. And as you saw, Roger Dillard coming back and talking about physics within the culinary program, and any math, what happens often is that if you CTE courses align nicely too with math classes as well, so there's that double portion that they get support as they learn the different math functions or things that they might need possibly within Rocketry or any of the other programs.
Well, just a comment, because I do love this stuff, and I've always believed, and I'm nuts, that Alma Highs kids who graduate from high school will not need a job. Like, you've learned everything you need to learn to get a job in this regular life. And as college becomes so much more expensive and maybe less, makes less sense on a kind of cost of learning that kind of deal, I just think this is great foundational work. So thank you all.
Stacy?
Thank you too for going through this. Since I've joined the board, this is the first time I've really gotten this nice, you know, teaching, really, of all of the details, the numbers, you know, and these grants are really exciting. So I learned a lot from this presentation, and I thank you, because I've asked a lot of questions about these programs over the years, over the year and a half that I've been on the board, so, and before. I was wondering if you all currently keep data on this, and if you don't have it tonight, it's fine, but I'd love to see it in, you know, the coming days if we can. Are we keeping track of to what extent, when you say, you know, the goal, the reason state and fed are pushing these programs is for the reason, I think Dr. Walker said, you know, "We want to capture kids who may not be college-bound and give them a path to success that is not college," and that's one of the big driving reasons for these programs. Are we keeping data on whether, you know, what percent of our CTE kids are in fact going to an alternate path other than college, is, I guess, one part of my question? Are we keeping data on what percent of the non-college-bound kids are getting captured into the CTE programs? Do you see where I'm going with this? And so, you know, how well are we matching the needs of our non-college-bound kids to these specific programs? Right? And the even more specific question I have that you may, I think you may know the answer to this, you know, we saw the one young lady who's now in culinary school, who is in the program, you know, in a more narrow way, what percent of each program are actually getting into the career that we're trying to train them for? You know, so what kind of success rate are we having? And again, if you don't have it tonight, that's fine, but one place that, you know, I'm trying to understand as I look at these programs, because I know, one question I've had, and I know they're expensive, like Dr. Walker said, is, you know, are, I can see that the district is making an effort with these certifications to really prepare them with specific skills that are going forward, and so, you know, how well then are we tracking them? Are those, you know, if you have responses now, that's great.
Well, I love how you always wish us to come to some kind of outcome. I'm going to need more than a couple days for this, but I like how you're thinking in ways that we can track kids after they graduate.
Right. I wasn't looking for a deadline so much as just, you know, and it also that we are, you know, and it's okay, you know, Rocketry seems to, you know, draw students in and teach them like, you know, Mr. Dillard's saying, in ways that are valuable to extending their math and all of that. So it's not that CTE only has to be for those kids, but I also, I personally would like to understand how well we're serving those other fat population.
Lisa? I kind of want to speak to that too, like, pretend I'm down there. But I, I don't, because I've pushed on the CTE thing for a few years. So to me, it's not an either-or, it's an "and." So a lot of the, like, and I think that's what they're saying in their presentation. So it's not like we're, they're either going into a career track right out of high school or they're going to college. There's a lot of overlap in there. And I see kids using a lot of these skills that they're learning in their college applications and in their, in their choice of having more of a focus. How many 17 or 18-year-olds know what they want to do with the rest of their life? Not very many. But some of these courses are helping them choose a major if they do decide to go to college. So I think it's an "and" instead of an either-or situation with the CTEs. I think there's, sometimes it is one path or the other, and a lot of times it's both, and it's giving them a more, it's giving them a better idea of what's out there. And I see kids getting really excited about school, like, "Wow, I didn't know there was a class that I was going to get to choose that I really love." Like, they're so excited about the coursework that they maybe haven't had that same feeling before, because it's like, "I gotta take English, I gotta take math, I gotta take science." And then this gives them like an elective that they're excited about. So maybe rather than taking an off period, they choose to take one of these classes, which I think is exciting. So, good job.
And aren't colleges looking for, I mean, I've heard from other parents, that colleges love to see that our Rocketry program's on someone's resume, or, you know, their transcript, and kind of put someone maybe over someone else from a different school.
Yeah, Rocketry, the one where they teach, the teachers.
This is also the perfect opportunity for our students to try stuff out. And so giving them an opportunity, I think about my niece in a completely different district, and she was kind of locked into the bad path, and she had to maintain that path, and she did not like it at all. And she knew that was not something that she was going to go into. But this is really, I love the fact that our kids get to try stuff out, and find out what their passion is. It may be the one thing that brings them to school every day, hopefully there's more, but it could be what brings them joy every day.
Yes. Okay, just so one final comment to close. I can't help but give a shout out to Dr. Walker, because it was a short three years ago that we had no pathways, we had no clear pathways through this, and it was a bold goal upon her first year in this role, to say, "We're going to get this aligned so that we can eventually get to those certifications." And so that was something that you started in this position, saying that you were going to take on, and quick three years later, here we are. So I appreciate you and your work, leadership.
And then we promptly gave you new goals.
That's right. We have more for you to do.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Next up on our agenda is...
Mike.
Mike Hager is going to consideration to proceed with the RFQ for architectural services for the next work we do on our campuses.
Yes, we're going to the board tonight to ask your permission to give us RFQ for architectural services, and start looking at the second phase of our master plan that we're going back into that and say, "With the approval tonight, then we'll have to pass it for November the 18th, we'll be able to proceed RFQs." And then between the 18th and December 16th, the committee would review those RFQs, and once they're done, the selection will present to the whole board, and then at the December meeting, we will have...
Thank you, Mike. And for the folks listening out there, we discussed this at our Wednesday morning meeting, that this is the procedure that we used for our last time selecting architects, and this is what you recommend is the most efficient, best way to identify who we want to work with for the next phase, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the consideration to proceed with RFQ for architectural services?
So moved.
Stacy, do you have a second? Carrie? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mike, go ahead and stay in the seat, because we'll do the next item, is consideration of refunding bonds.
Do I need a question here with Sam and I?
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, good evening, the board. Dr. Beshar, a pleasure to be here with you. Also here is Stephanie Lyd, who's with North North School, right, that upon cash flow contract, we're leaving documents, if there are any questions in that regard. So tonight, we'll quickly review, we have an opportunity to refund, we'll refinance on the district outstanding debt. So on this first slide, again, we have a quick summary of the different bond issues the district has outstanding. And we're currently looking at the Series 2013 and 2014, which are callable on February 1 of 2022. Under federal tax law, we're able to refund those within 90 days of their call date as a tax exempt refunding. And so those, that's what we'll be exploring in the present presentation tonight in your action. We'll continue to watch for the other bond issues as we approach those call dates for other refunding opportunities. So again, tonight, we're presenting the opportunity to refund the callable portion of the Series 2013 in the amount of $23 million near $40,000, which extends out to currently to February of 2029, and also the Series 2014, the amount of $5,375, which extends to 2033 currently. We are, through working with Mike, we are planning to shorten the length of the debt and pay off this debt quicker, and we'll see that in a moment. And currently, with the projections we have on the current market, we expect to be able to interest, or the current projection on the interest rate on the new refunding bond will be 0.78%, and change, obviously, but that's the current. So this is a large schedule, I understand, with a lot of small numbers, but on the left-hand side is the current debt service requirements of the district, that's the principal and interest. We move across from left to right, we take out what the debt service is going to be refunded, and then in the box in the middle is the projected new refunding issue, and then to the far right is what the annual savings are, and over the life of the issue, that's projecting a total savings of approximately $1,600,000. This is a quick look at the sources and uses for the funds. Mainly wanted to just show this because the savings is net, being in all costs associated with the refunding, and those savings are pure true savings to the district. This is a pricing page, the columns that are highlighted in the middle show what the coupon rates and the interest rates to the investors would be, and you can see those low rates from the 0.2 up that give us the effective rate of 0.78. And this, just for a quick background, so a reminder to the board of what you have accomplished, or different boards have accomplished over the years, as we've gone through different opportunities to refinance debt, and since 2003, the district has achieved over $26,400,000 in interest cost savings. With this additional $1,006 projected, we'd be over $28 million in total debt service savings that the district would have achieved. So tonight, for your consideration and approval, is a parameter or delegated authorization for a refunding of a portion of the district's outstanding debt, being the 2013 and 2014 issues, and we've utilized this process in past refundings. Your authorization or approval of this authorization would be that we would complete this refunding under these parameters, that we would issue no more than $28,715,000 in new debt, which is, in new refunding debt, which is the amount that would be refunded, so we're not, we are not going to in any way issue any additional debt. Maximum maturity would be 2033, that's the way where the current final maturity is, but as we stated, our plan is shorten that for 2027. The maximum interest rate would be 5%, which we're, that's just a marker. And then we need to achieve a minimum present value savings of 3%, and we're currently projecting over 5%. So we'll continue to work as we go forward with Mr. Hager and Dr. Beshar to complete this as efficiently as possible and get the most savings. A quick look at the timeline, we're kind of in the middle of things. We've prepared and applied for the PSF guarantee, which gives the district a AAA rating on top of its own AA1 rating. We've started on the official statement, and tonight, we're at the board meeting, of course, we'll start distributing the POS, we've contacted rating agencies, and we hope and plan to get the bids for the refunding bonds in the middle of November, probably November 17, and we should be able to close by December 4. Hopefully by your next board meeting, we can provide you the final results. This was a page we had provided to you earlier. Again, I realize it's very small if you're trying to read it on the screen, but Alma Highs is listed at the top line or the top row with your different debt characteristics, amount of debt, how long it's out, and then compare it to other districts in this central South Texas region, just to give you an idea, the Alma Highs, as far as amount of debt outstanding, would fall, and those other districts are listed from the most debt down to the least debt, Alma Highs would fall in that shaded area if you're in that list, but you compare very favorably, all in tax rate and debt, and debt to taxable valuation ratio, length of debt, everything like that, you compare very, very favorably. Be happy to answer any questions.
David?
Well, first, I appreciate you guys staying on this. I know for some people, bond, payback, all that is a little bit of a loss, they have no idea what it means. We're not paying down the mortgage yet. We've got to stay on top of the call today, send the refinance rates of the track, so I appreciate you guys staying on this. So on the calendar, I guess we go up with pricing on November 7, right? So like, if for some reason Yulker just kind of erupts, gives downside for us, what's kind of the last day that we have to say, now the pricing is not attractive?
Well, the 17th. When we see what's going on, if it doesn't work, we just stop, and we can postpone for a week, we can postpone for a month, the parameter approval is for six months. So if for some reason the market turns against us, we'll just continue to watch on a daily, weekly basis until we can make it work. And if nothing happens, nothing happens, you're not out.
Any other questions or comments? I would just like to say, Mike, or kind of a question, just to reaffirm for everyone that we're going to shorten our debt payoff, we're going to save about $1.6 million in the process, and you're comfortable that we can still do this even though we've lowered our debt service tax by two pennies?
All of that is.
Excellent. Well, that goes to your money...
Every time saying the same, yes, I think...
Yeah, that goes to your money management, so thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the consi... whoops, wrong one, consideration of refunding bonds? Well, if you're going to do it, then you have to read the question in yours. I suckered you into that.
Thanks.
Exhibit P.
Oh, good, it's shorter. I can do A's, one of them.
You can do A.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Alma Highs Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2021, pursuant to a delegated sale.
Second? David? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, the next item that we're going to move on to on our agenda is the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the board or have been previously reviewed and discussed in prior meetings, and that we therefore enact with one motion. Having reviewed it, is there anything that any of the board members would like to remove from the consent agenda to consider as an item on the regular agenda? Okay? With that, I would like to draw everyone's attention, and we try and mention this every time, the donations, we had over $77,000 in donations this past year, which we are incredibly grateful for that. Since there's no items being pulled out, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Brian? Second?
Second.
Stacy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, our next thing, we go to Section 6, Board Members Committee Reports, and we'll start off with the Alma High School Foundation, David Hornberg.
All right, so we met yesterday. So a couple things. Number one, they presented on their audit, their Form 990, which is very good, it's done, you know, the only like thing in the audit was that the organization is so small that it's hard to make sure we've got all our risk controls in place. The only thing we could do is hire like 10 people, which obviously is not a good use of donor funds. We had, oh yeah, we had the Mary Norman Journalism Fund presented in alum of 1969, the name I am so sorry for giving right now, but she was a student of Mary Norman, and she became a journalist, and it was a really neat moment for everybody in the room to just kind of hear this. And it was a really neat moment for everybody in the room to just kind of hear the stories that this teacher, the lives that she impacted, and the fund that's going to carry her name now. And the process for the fund will benefit the journalism community, so it was a pretty neat deal. They are robustly, you know, capitalized, got two years of operating expenses, so they're good to go on their liquidity. The endowment's up to $10 million, or nearly $10 million, which is phenomenal, and testament to the safe money management they've done, but also the donations for our community. Dr. Bouchard got to present on the Vator tax election, and Mike was there as well to answer questions. It was a good use of time to communicate to a roomful of, you know, 20 to 30, you know, community-minded people who want to support the school district, so that they could understand what's going on. This is one of those elections that not a lot of people are noticing, and so we're trying to continue to get the word out to make sure that our community knows, because in large, large, large part, our community loves our school district, so we've got to make sure that people know there's a way home to South. And then we have a report on Greater Heights tonight, which is very much on track. And they've already raised more in commitments this year than they did all of last year, which is phenomenal. There are only a couple of tickets left, they've basically done that, that's why. They've got several different new ways to donate and to participate. The one that I thought was really cool is that you've got to pay to get these old mystery bags, you don't really know what's in them, but it was kind of fun, and you know, it's kind of, you know, Getty-type stuff and all that. Just another great way to come up with ways to give back to our schools. And finally, there's a mules-up donation, which a lot of people want to get an email in their inboxes, the school foundation has their email, and you contribute, the recommended donation is $50, given it's the 50-year anniversary of the school foundation. And you can designate your class if you're donating from, so you can keep track whose classes are doing really really well. I regret to inform everybody, the class of '98, not '97, is ahead.
Of course, Charlotte.
But it's been really fun to see people kind of rally around that and donate, donate to the school foundation. So they've got a lot of great things going on, a lot, a lot of interest in the tax, the tax election, and I anticipate them spreading the word on behalf.
In fact, they took board action on it, which was nice.
Oh, thank you for saying, go ahead and talk about that.
They formally actually took board action to endorse the TRE, and that, that really is a loud community message of support, and they really talked through ways that they could, you know, engage the community on our behalf around that, so.
Next up, Communications Committee, that's me. We did a high school learning walk for a few people here who might not know what that is. Throughout the school year, we, as a school board, meet with the administration on the various campuses, and we do just that, we walk the campus. And we look in on classrooms. This one was a really good learning walk for a couple of reasons. One, it was really good to be back on campuses, obviously, last year. We did not real, we had one learning walk, but it was a much different atmosphere. So it was good to go to the high school, our group, and walking through. There are a couple of things that really stood out. One was we got to look in on a teachers' meeting. What is it?
PLC.
A PLC, which is basically, teachers that are teaching the same subject have a meeting period, I think it was once a week, and they get together to discuss how things are going in their classes, what students seem to be understanding, what they're not understanding, what can be done better, and they just collaborate on how they can teach better, how they can design their courses better. That was really, for a school board, that was fun to sit there and watch and see kind of how the sausage is made, and you come to understand why it's so good. The other big thing was that we then had lunch, and we had students from throughout the campus who sat at our tables, representing all of the various programs, from ROTC to Rocketry, to band, to choir, to student council, and it was really great. Just seeing what our students are thinking about, listening to them, visiting with them, and seeing really what a kind of enthusiastic, engaged group we have, which is a very motivating thing for us to get to do, and it keeps us in touch with what's happening on the campuses. So it was a great one, I enjoyed it. Okay, next, District Design Team, Brian Hamilton.
District Design Team met on October 15. It was our first meeting of the year, and for those not familiar with the District Design Team, it's a group of the educators and administrators here at Alamo Heights, led by the esteemed Dr. Frank Alfaro. Given it was our first meeting, he led us through introductions, we talked about, or we revisited the purpose of the District Design Team, and then we focused on the goals for this year. Those four goals are, one, to revive the student portfolio for the Engage Classroom Initiative. It's also to look at the need for district-wide communication about directional systems, and this is really about the need for communication with all stakeholders to explain the why, what, and how of the profile of a learner, Engage Classroom, Blueprint for Learning, Vision 2020, and the community-based accountability systems. The third goal is looking at character integration into our curriculum for the character.org, going for the district character, what is that?
Recognition.
Recognition, thank you, good work. And then the last goal is looking at the secondary student and teacher trust and relationships. So if you remember the surveys we looked at, there's a little bit of a disconnect there between the trust and relationships at the elementary level, and then those numbers fall when we get into the secondary teachers, so it's diving into that this year. We then broke into small groups based on which goal we wanted to work on for the year, and started working on those goals. And we will meet again, I believe, next month. Good stuff, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That concludes our committee reports. Section 7 on our agenda, Business Recommendations. We have no business recommendations. That's, I guess, everything's running itself. Section 8, Calendar Review.
Okay, Alicia has detailed for us our end of October. Do I need to?
It's a lot of calendar right there.
It's a lot of calendar right there, and so she's detailed it all the way through November, and then added some additional dates based on your recommendation to the board with RFP process. And so I'm going to just highlight a couple of these events, looking forward to November 1st, hosting our learning walk in the new Mule Dome, and so we'll meet in one of the classrooms there, we'll get you that information as soon as we have it. And then just a reminder, on November 4, we're going to host our Second Annual Gratitude BBQ. Collier will bring his kit and cook, and I invite you all to come and join our admin team and serve, our custodians, our maintenance department, client service, and our cafeteria workers that day. So, you know, anytime that you would be available between 11, I mean, I would say maybe 11 to 1 to just come and kind of roll up your sleeves and help. It'll be at the bus farm over our client services, yeah. That was really well received last year, and I loved that you all were part of that. Going down to Wednesday, November 10, is our November G and P meeting, and I'm asking the Audit Committee, Brian, Clay, and David, stay for about 30 minutes afterwards to review the audit, and I'm going down to the bottom. Monday, November 29, we're going to host a Building Committee meeting, Brian, Stacy, and Clay, to start reviewing the bids that come in, and then I'm hosting another one on December 3, if we need more time, which is just a tentative hold of the Building Committee. We will start our Architect interviews on December 8, and I would love if on your calendar we could extend that meeting to November 30, because we'll be able to do our business, you know, looked at what our business items will be for December, but start the Architect interviews at that point, and then just tentatively hold December 15, if we need that date as well, prior to our recommendation at the December 4 meeting. So there's a lot there for you, but I just wanted to try to get on your calendar, because everyone knows how busy November and December get, quickly. Are there questions about the calendar?
Frank, do you have a question?
I'm sorry, it's a distraction.
Distraction, okay.
You know what I'm remembering in here, too, is we actually need a Policy Committee. You and I talked about it today, now that you stood up.
It's a Policy Subcommittee, not like a G and P.
Right, yeah, so I'll get that out to you all with my update this weekend, when that will be.
Right, Brian and Lisa.
Okay, any other questions?
Great. Thank you. All right, now, Section 9, the Superintendent's Communication, so keep the mic and tell us about Vator.
So we have been taking any opportunity we could to get in from groups and share the information. We tried to distill this complex message around our tax rate election into a video, and I'm going to show that here for the good of the audience and those who are listening. This is a great resource that we pushed out, both on the webpage, the Vator webpage, and also just through social media in multiple ways, so that our community could try to get their minds around what this means. And so Alicia, if you push play, I'll ask Mike to come join us at the table to answer any questions that we have afterwards, and just to talk through next steps.
In this video, you will learn about the voter-approved tax rate election called by our AHISD Board of Trustees. You will hear what a tax rate election is, the historical perspective of school funding here at AHISD, and the proposed use of tax funds. Thank you for watching. Our AHISD Board of Trustees calls for a voter-approved tax rate election, also known as Vator, that will be held on November 7, 2021. If approved by voters, it would generate additional revenue while reducing homeowners' property tax rates. This would not result in a tax rate increase, rather, it would create the lowest total tax rate in 10 years. A tax rate election is a special election called by the school district's Board of Trustees, asking voters to approve a tax rate proposal. School taxes are levied in two parts, Maintenance and Operation, or MNO, which funds general operations like building maintenance and salaries, and Interest and Zinking, or INS, which funds the payment of the bonds. The tax rate is set annually by the district's Board of Trustees. This recommended new tax rate would provide an estimated increase of $1.4 million to the operating fund over the next few years. What does Vator mean for AHISD? Total tax rate of $1.1934 cents. $1.4 million increase to general fund each year, not subject to recapture, and the lowest tax rate in 10 years. Approval of the Vator will allow Alamo Heights ISD to provide competitive salaries for our employees and educational program for students. It's important to look back over the years to understand the financial challenges AHISD has faced, due in large part to the amount of local revenue that we are required to send back to the state due to Robin Hood legislation through recapture payments. To date, AHISD has sent $622 million of local tax dollars back to the state of Texas. In 2011, the state of Texas kept school funding by $5 billion. This resulted in a $5 million cut for the biennium for Alamo Heights ISD that resulted in the need to form Budgetary Advisory Council to make difficult decisions regarding our local budget. Cuts to 25 positions across the district, and a reduction in funding to all campuses and local budgets by 20%. The cost of educating students over the past 12 years has increased up to $7.5 million, or $625,000 annually. A landmark school funding law passed by the Texas Legislature in 2019, HB3, provided more funding to the majority of school districts statewide. Alamo Heights ISD, however, received less compared to other districts. As a result, Alamo Heights ISD has not been able to heat pace with the increases in staff compensation that other districts have been able to offer their employees. The additional revenue that came into the district as a result of HB3 funding went directly to salary increases that year. 90% of our entire AHISD operating budget is allocated to salaries and has been for years. Today, as a result of the lack of funding, we find ourselves with a compensation skew that is eight in Barre County for starting teacher salaries, and six in the county for average teacher salaries. We remain committed to attracting and retaining the highest quality faculty and staff. Again, Alamo Heights ISD's school taxes are levied in two parts, Maintenance and Operation, or MNO, and Interest and Zinking, or INS. Due to HB3 legislation, recapture districts like AHISD now have access to an additional two golden pennies. These are golden pennies because all of the revenue generated by these two cents are protected from recapture payments, and therefore all revenue generated stays within the district operating budget. Last year, the AHISD MNO rate was .9764 cents, and the INS rate was 22 cents, for a total tax rate of $1.1934. This year, the recommended MNO is .9934 cents, which includes the two golden pennies and an INS rate of 20 cents, for a total tax rate of $1.1934. This equates to an overall decrease of tax rate by .003 cents. What does a Vator mean for Alamo Heights ISD? Alamo Heights ISD taxpayers will see a tax rate decrease. The new tax rate will be the lowest rate in the past 10 years. The new tax rate will generate an additional $1.4 million that will not be subject to recapture, which means all of the money generated will stay in our district. The additional revenue generated will allow Alamo Heights ISD to provide competitive salaries for our employees and educational program for students. Taxes are frozen for those 65 and over, and they will not see a tax increase. To learn more about the voter-approved tax rate election, also known as Vator, visit our AHISD website at www.AHISD.gov and select the About the District tab. Early voting begins on October 18 and runs through October 29. Election Day is November 7.
So if you just go to the next slide, yeah, that kind of goes. So just a couple of points. The early voting will take place on Saturday and Sunday as well, as you're sharing information about this, I think that's important to share. There have been some questions that we fielded about the wording on the ballot, and I'm going to read that, how the ballot reads, because it seems like it's contradictory to the $1.4 million we say we're going to get. So the ballot reads that ratifying the Avalon tax rate of $1.1934 in AHISD for the current year, a rate that will result in an increase of 3.97% in the MNO tax revenue for the district for the current year as compared to the preceding year, which is an additional $2,787,591. And so, you know, simplistically speaking, when I explain this, it's all about the MNO side, it's made up of both Tier 1 and Tier 2 funds. But Mike, why don't you give us some details about talking that through?
Okay. On the, the state regulates what about says. So in looking at the 3.97% of basically looking at the taxes, we looked at last year, or taxes, we're looking at this year, we had other taxes in last year, 3.97. That equates to the 2.7% increase. So let's take out the 1.4 that the two cents generated, that is around about 1.4%. Well, it's a little over $600,000 of that is recaptured by the state. This is the second year in the biennium, so the available school fund, which would usually receive funds, goes down by about $900,000. So right there is 1.5 million of that, unless it went from 4 million to 1.4. So that's where the difference comes in. Like, we're actually not going to receive total revenue off of that, we could get just a break even as far as, not the two cents, but just the Tier 1, if that makes sense right.
Not at all, but maybe everyone else understood.
No, I couldn't follow that one.
Yeah.
I understood the last one, the break even, I got that.
So you remember, HB3 gives us one, two and a half percent revenue increase year over year.
Right.
The two and a half percent increase year over year will part of the catch up by the state for us, so we lose... So we lose $600,000 out of 1.4. Each year, all school districts get available school fund, which last year was 1.8 million. This year, it's only $900,000. So we lose about $900,000 off of that. Those two together, our tax increase of the two and a half percent make up for the capture part and the shortage. Is that making sense?
That makes more sense. So passing this tax, this additional two golden pennies, is what's going to enable us to kind of hold our own as opposed to sliding back. Okay.
So vote yes if you want the two golden pennies, correct?
It's a for or against.
Four. You vote four.
So if you vote four, the proposition is a vote for adding the two golden pennies. Okay.
That equates to 1.4 million.
Right.
That's not how it reads.
Right.
So, yeah. Lisa, go ahead.
So there's a, the only thing, it's a little pinky pointing on the messaging, is that bottom part where it says, "Tax taxes are frozen for those 65 and older," which is just a fact, and that's how it's always been. But then it says, "And they will not see a tax increase." So I just think that, that is confusing.
Well, because it makes it sound like other people will see a tax increase.
Or, we're saying they're going to see a tax decrease, so if you're over 65, you don't-
No, no, all we're saying is their tax rate is increased. Your property values increase as you, which, which will give you a tax increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That makes sense. It's a good question.
Any other, David?
So the available school fund, our revenue from that dropped 900 grand going to the next year. That's running to you.
Remember how the legislature bailed us out and they saved public education in Texas? Oh, yeah, that was last year.
I, on the, there's a slide on here, this came up at the community meeting. There's a slide on here that says, "We will receive $1.4 million over the next few years." And then another slide that says, "We will receive $1.4 million each year." I understand we're going to receive it each year, but there is a point earlier, and then there, it's just, you could read it either way. But I don't know, you know, just for those either listening or if there's something that could be true. There is one slide that is inconsistent, I think, but we, and it did, it was asked about. And I, I wasn't clear based on the way it was saying there, but anyway. It is annual.
$1.4 million every year.
Every year. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other communication?
No, early voting ends October 29th, next Friday.
And do you have any numbers? I know the first day of voting, I think it was 17 people voted.
We had seven the first day, 17 the second day.
Oh, so that was two days.
I think it was 7, 20, 17, so we need to get them going out. We need people to show up.
That's an important part of the message too, is if you think your vote doesn't count, just realize that eight people or whatever came yesterday. It matters that everyone-
So anyone who is still up and listening to this, other than the need to get alive, you ought to go out and vote. That'd be really good.
Eight to six tomorrow.
I'm going tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's true. We, we could probably swing it just here.
True. Well, especially if we got all of our family friends.
That's right. Okay. That concludes the public part of our meeting. Before we head into executive session as per Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, we're going to take a short break. I'd like to thank everyone for coming and staying.
Sam.
81. 32 to 0.
Oh, good. That's great. Birdie can you?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. They played really, really good. They used a bunch.